It's lit again.
All right, motion to adjourn. There we go. Thank you, Dolores. Good evening, welcome to our regularly scheduled meeting of the Town Council of April 4th, 2016. Donna, if you could make some pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberating, and just as for all.
Dolores?
Counselor Bello.
Here.
Counselor Hemmend.
Here.
Counselor Hurley is unable to attend. Counselor Latina is unable to attend. Counselor Martino?
Here.
Counselor Rel?
Here.
Counselor Spinella?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Berry?
Here.
And Mayor Montaner?
Here.
Thank you, Dolores.
Thank you.
We have no hearings this evening, so we'll move right into public comment. Anyone wishing to speak tonight? Tom, I mean, you've got the whole audience, you gotta come up, you gotta say something. Make our slippery ride over here worth it, Tom.
Sorry for taking your time. Tom Mazarella, 600 Walker Hill Road. Just a couple things I wanted to bring up. Reading the news. You know, I have a problem with the taxes going up every year. You know, the situation with the state, it's gonna get worse. I think we have to face up to that. This year's probably just the beginning of it. And it's really gonna kick in. There's an article in the paper the other day about the state comptroller. You know, giving a warning that the revenues are down. People are spending less money. And it's gonna affect the taxes. So I think Weathersfield as a town needs to prepare for that. And I think you have to start getting into a mode of cutting down the spending. Keep it realistic. And it's only gonna get worse. At some point, the state's gonna cut the money off to the various towns. And you're not gonna have any choice but to drastically reduce or increase the taxes. That's just gonna be to survive, not to improve things. So I think you need to really take a hard look at that. The other thing I wanted to comment on is about the situation over in Newington. Where the deputy mayor voted against the party lines over there when they're talking about their budget. And the only reason I'm bringing it up is I think you as a council should consider that. That, you know, you got elected by the taxpayers. They're hoping that you make good decisions. And that may not be the decision that your party has. But I don't think you should just follow the party line. If you truly think voting in the other direction is the right thing to do. Just a food item for thought. The other item I wanted to mention is about Weathersfield's housing market. Get this little clip in the real estate section of the Hartford Current. The last quarter of last year, there were 23 foreclosures in Weathersfield. So, to me, that's a shocking number. I know things are not great, but I don't think we realize how bad they are. And there's, I've said it before, I'm gonna just keep saying it, kinda like Gus with the stop signs. Everybody's not making a great living. And coming up with an extra $200 or $300 for a tax increase may not seem a lot to you people or myself, but there's a lot of people out there that are on a limited budget and everything's a struggle. So I ask you to consider that. I ask you to consider it when you look at the Board of Education budget. I read the budget, 229 pages, extremely boring. But if they put that much work into preparing that budget, I think they can put that much effort into figuring out a way to save a couple million dollars and keep it at the 56 million. So I ask that you consider that and deny their request. Thank you.
Hey, Tom. Anybody else wishing to speak this evening? Mr. Young?
Good evening, Robert Young, 20 Copper Mill Road. I noticed the same article that Tom was talking about regarding the housing market here in Weathersfield and the 23 foreclosures. And I, I mean, I knew that there were a lot of them happening. I also thought that they had slowed up. But obviously, it continues, which is disturbing. I mean, we keep hearing one thing, yet we see something different. And it does affect not just those people who lost their homes, it affects the neighborhoods where those homes were with the prices. We constantly have people who are leaving involuntary wise, leaving us here in town where we end up having another house on the market that just happened, you know, someone passed away. And then you get all these other things happening, and then you get people who just wanna get the heck out of here. And it just keeps driving the price down. But this was part of the planning that should've been taken place here. The planning should've been to reduce our taxes over the last number of years in order to keep people stable and keep them from taking off. Unfortunately, the town councils and the boards of education had this idea that Weathersfield was in Connecticut was so fantastic that people will never leave. And now you found out in reality. They're willing and they're able and they are leaving. And that leaves the rest of us behind. And that leaves us with the current debt load that the entire state and the towns have taken on, such as Weathersfield. And that in turn generates a downward trend in pricing. I agree, there are some homes that sell for pretty good money. But in general, it's not, it's not good. And that comes right back here to the Board of Directors from the town of Weathersfield. And it reflects on every one of you. I know there's some new people here, but you're gonna have your chance to either join them or stand out and go a different direction because that's what we really need, is a different direction. The prior councils have destroyed this town. And that goes same with the state of Connecticut. The state legislature has destroyed the state. They have gotten so arrogant with businesses, with people. And now we're, now the payback is happening. And of course, we are gonna pay for it. I've looked at the board report that they put out last, over the last couple weeks. And I did make comment at the last town council meeting about the changing of the chart of accounts. And I've, you know, I've gone through the report and there's a number of issues or accounts that are now consolidated into this new year. And then on the flip side, there's a number of accounts that they took a solid one number from last year's budget and the other years, and they made a number of extra line items. They just did some flip-flopping. So they can justify by saying, oh, we're doing this for more transparency. Well, for some items, yes. Some other items, they closed them up, took three, four line items and made them into one line item. And... Not good. Because to follow some of it is difficult. I do notice, and we all know, that they wanna bring on more heads. They, bringing on more heads is gonna cost more money. Bringing on more heads is a mistake. We're not growing as a town. We're not growing, with the exception of what'd they say, 12 kids? 12 new ones or some kind of a low number like that? Yet they wanna bring on so-and-so, these different kinds of positions. And that should be denied. Matter of fact, you should cut back on the current ones. Because next year's gonna be worse. And what's happened over the past six years, you didn't cut back. You just kept going along, kept taxing and taxing and taxing. Now, all of a sudden, we're, everything is helter-skelter up at the state Capitol until last week when they says, oh, deficits closed. That's his baloney closed. They just borrowed a lot more money and that's how they're gonna close it. It's not that they have the cash. Cash is running out. Cash is getting shorter and shorter every time that they tally it up. And we're heading in that direction, Mayor, that you should've turned the tide a long time ago in town and tightened up. Instead, you went on a spending spree. And I can spout off dump trucks, backhoes, and so forth and so on that you've bought. I mean, did our headcount go down? It seemed like computers. The computer was supposed to help us become more efficient. We end up having as many people as ever in the job. We didn't reduce. You buy brand-new backhoes, well, a brand-new backhoe, well, you might not need an extra mechanic on the line to keep them going. You might find, you don't need any more shovelers because now you got the mechanical thing that's gonna do it and the better dump trucks. But we've spent and spent and spent. And we need to reduce that spending. But unfortunately, we're now locked in over the last number of years to now what's known as fixed costs. Oh, these are fixed costs to us. And we're gonna pay dearly for those fixed costs going forward. And there's no way that we can contract unless we lose people. That's the only choice you have. And we're cut back on consultants. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Anybody else wishing to speak? Okay, seen none, we'll move on. Council reports. Any council reports?
The library met on March 22nd. And they're looking to hire Lothrup Associates for an architect engineering service for reconfiguring of library space. It's not a renovation, but some repurposing of different areas for the library to meet the current and future needs of the residents. And they hope to have that item on the town council agenda in early May. There will be a Friends of the Library book sale the weekend of April 30th with a preview event the Thursday before. And they, finally, they've worked on their budget and they're proposing a budget of 2.4% increase and will meet with us on Saturday, the 23rd, to discuss that. Also, the Memorial Day Parade Committee met on March 30th. And they discussed the theme for the year's parade. They solicited nominations for parade marshal, for speakers, for bands. The details should be finalized at the next meeting. And this year, they are going to honor veterans from World War II, Korea, and Vietnam as it's the anniversary of each one of those wars.
Thank you, Amy. Council reports. Tony?
Shared Services met last week to review the consolidation of town and board's data processing department. The union has finally signed off on the union position being eliminated and switched to non-union. We were also given a draft at that meeting of the memorandum of understanding between the town and the board, which is modeled after Enfield's consolidation. Members were asked to review the draft and get our comments back to either the town manager or superintendent so we can have the finalized draft before the next meeting so we can have things finalized hopefully before the start of the next fiscal years. Suggestions for the next items to consolidate were discussed. Human resource and maintenance were the two brought up. The committee heard Mr. Emmett's reasons for not consolidation, but was suggested that the board personnel committee review the consolidation and give their recommendation. Regarding maintenance, it was suggested the board give the town human resource director a copy of the board's custodian contract that's now in arbitration so she can review it and advise us of any possible complication we'd have to face with consolidations that we might have to overcome.
Tony, thank you. Anything else? Reports? Comments? Any council comments? Mike Rel?
I do have a comment. The Taste of Weathersfield is coming up this Saturday, April 9th. I believe it starts at 7:00 PM. It's at the Keeney Center. It's always a great event. Buy your tickets now, before Friday. They're $35. After Friday, it'll be $40. You can buy it online. I think it's www.Weathersfieldhistory.org. Purchase it online or at the door for $40 on Saturday. Thanks.
Thanks, Mike. Tony?
This past week, the volunteer fire department had their wine/beer tasting event, raised money for scholarships. And just wanted to compliment them on the great job that they had done. Some of the counselors here at the dais and others that are absent were also there. And so I just wanna say the fire department can do's on a great job you did.
Thanks, Tom. Anything else? Anything else? Jeff, anything?
Yeah, I'm gonna do a quick...
You're gonna cover a quick budget issue. Great. You're pinching well, Jeff. You're pinching just fine.
Jeff, you didn't give the other Mike OJT in the job?
What?
You didn't give the other Mike OJT in the AV?
While we're waiting for these to, let me get over here. While we're waiting for these to warm up, let me do some of my other announcements here. Well, just one second. Just some other things before we start on the budget. We had some issues with the basement being very wet in this building. So we called in ConOSHA, Connecticut OSHA, and they did a study of the basement. So we've gotta undertake some repairs to the ventilation systems, change out some carpet, particularly in the health district's offices. So we're gonna be spending some money down there trying to fix some of those things, ceiling tiles. We get some condensation in the ceiling on the air conditioners that make the ceiling tiles wet. So we're gonna do some work down there. The expectation that we had money left over in the snow budget was hopeful, yet dashed this morning when the snow hit with our, we had to send out the dump trucks and the salters and plows this morning. So we will have exhausted our snow budget for the year, including salt. We had some money left in salt, but imagine we spread a lot of that today. Jeff Morissette, for those of you who are familiar with the fire department, he's one of our deputy fire marshals. He's also the state fire administrator. He will be inducted into, he's also Weathersfield firefighter. He will be inducted to the state Fire Department Firefighters Hall of Fame this Thursday at Danote Waters Edge. So a group of us are going down to witness that and congratulate him this Thursday. So that's tremendous. Jeff's a tremendous asset to this town and to the state fire service. Having said that, we'll jump into the budget a little bit here. And for everybody, the budget is online. If you go to the Weathersfield, www-weathersfieldct.com, it's, there's a link on the homepage. So... Where's the start slideshow?
On the bottom.
On the bottom.
Next to 69%. No. Right, no, there.
There we go. Okay.
There you go. Job done. Donna?
All right.
I'm going, impressed.
Okay. Okay, 2016, 2017 Town of Weathersfield proposed budget. By charter, the town council has to have in their hands by the first Monday in April the proposed budget from the town manager's office, which includes the Board of Education budget, which you heard a presentation on at your last meeting, and the proposed library budget, which is a component unit of the Town of Weathersfield. So those three elements, the town, the Board of Ed, and the library are contained within the budget. And part of the town budget is road improvements, which is a separate fund. But it's in our budget overall. Okay, the mill rate, as proposed in this budget, will go from 3819 to 3919. One mill even of increase. Total spending will increase $3.1 million. You can see the different increases in the different components. The Board of Ed is going up 1.1 million. You heard that at the last meeting. The noneducational expenses, the town is going up 1.9 million. I will say that $900,000 of that increase is the debt service on the second set of bonds for the high school and another 184 is MDC. So those two numbers combined kinda send, set the town rate kinda a little higher than we would like, expect, or historically have seen. So there's your budget drivers. Board of Ed, up 1.1 million. Debt service on the new high school, or the high school renovation, goes up about $900,899.501. As our, what we call legacy employees retire, those are the employees that get retiree health benefits. Retire, we have to budget for an extra medical plan for them. So those retirees with retiree health that retire between the age of 55 and 65, they cost us an additional health insurance plan. So we're seeing as those legacy employees retire, our retiree health costs go up in addition to the money we're putting in OPEB. So for this year, we kind of got a double whammy on the retiree medical. We get about 124 in the health insurance for the retirees and another 122 on our piece for our OPEB contribution. So as those legacy employees retire, those numbers will increase. Until such time, the OPEB fund, which has about $12 million in it, can assume those costs. Now, it'll be years from now before that happens, but we can expect that number to continue to go up as more and more legacy employees retire. The transfer to capital improvement is up $88,000. That's to replace the money from the Cregg Trust that didn't earn the $90,000 we need every year that goes into capital. So we're replacing those funds with general funds, which increases the transfer from the general fund about $90,000. You can see the proposed spending increase as it is today, 3.22%. So as you begin your work on the budget, that's your starting point. You can see the 10-year trend there. That's what it is. Municipal aid, very good news this year on municipal aid so far. Legislature's kinda held their promise. You can see that there's a couple million dollars more in there that we are expecting and hope to realize. We did run the calculation on the motor vehicle. As you know, motor vehicle taxes are capped at 32 mills. We're getting an expected 993, excuse me, 933 back from the state to replace that lost millage on the cars. At the proposed mill rate, the actual loss is 1.156. But with the municipal revenue sharing program, we're still realizing more than $1 million in new revenue sharing from the state. So if that holds, very good news for the Town of Weathersfield. So, so far, so good. We'll keep our fingers crossed. Capital improvements, we kept about the same number as we did current year, 905, 903. You can see the broad categories that are funded. Inside that drainage number, there's $80,000 to redo Cloverdale Pond. That was a priority set, and the C I A C is recommending that that work be done. We anticipate doing that this summer. We were proposing, or actually in the process, of paving the streets in that neighborhood. So we're gonna leave a portion of Cloverdale Road without the top coat on it until the work on the pond is done, then come back in and refinish and finish the street. We have an on-call engineer right now putting the bid package together. So in the event that the council does adopt the budget with that project in it, we'll be in a position to bid it and build it this summer when the money's available. Road improvements, again funded at 1.5 million. That's in the budget. And then the unassigned fund balance, the expected fund balance at the end of fiscal 2017, not at the end of 2016, but the end of next year, 11%. We're realizing an extra amount of ECS in the current year, this year, that we did not budget when you adopted the budget for the current year. So that's kind of the driver of that, and we don't anticipate spending all of the current year's allocation of fund balance. So... That's kind of the budget brief. For the full public hearing, there'll be a little bit more, but just wanted to give everybody an overview. Again, this is all online. If you read 200 and something pages of the Board of Ed, you can read ours too. We got a couple hundred pages for you. Have at it. Actually, I will say, the narratives, the department heads are getting really good at the narratives and really talking about where the money goes, what they accomplish, what they want to accomplish, what the purpose of their programs are. So very excited about the narratives. If you wanna get a real depth and taste of what's going on in these departments, Mike and his staff have done another excellent job. They got the budget presentation award from GFOA for the current year. And we are expected to submit for next year on the budget you all adopt. So that's all good. And we'll go from there. Be happy to answer any questions before we move on.
Questions for Jeff from the committee on council?
Wonderful.
Thank you, Jeff. Dolores, anything from the clerk's office?
Nothing, except the budget hearing is on the 18th in this room at 7:00. There'll be a sheet to sign up on if you wanna speak when you come in the door. Also, we have a presidential preference primary. It's April 26th. Absentee ballots are available tomorrow for my office. On May 12th, you can save your papers since you wanna have shredded. And there is going to be a truck at Picking Community Center from 12 to noon on May 12th. That's it.
Thank you, Dolores. Okay, we'll move into council action. I think we have one resignation. Mike, you gonna cover that?
I will. I have a resignation of Lee Standish from the Planning and Zoning Commission. Lee is at 280 Hartford Avenue. His resignation is effective today, April 4th, 2016.
Motion of second?
Second.
Thank you, motion of second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'll have to get him to know, I think Lee's been involved in P&amp;Z for a long time.
Just two more for Mike for resign.
Okay, these are new, right?
These are appointments.
Okay.
Yeah, we got that.
Same one.
Thank you.
I do have an appointment as well. Again, to the Planning and Zoning Commission to fill that vacancy. It's an alternate position. David Edwards III, 200 Windmill Hill, effective today, April 4th, 2016, to June 30th, 2000... Is it 2016?
Yes.
Just...
It's to complete.
Yeah, the unexpired term.
Okay, unexpired term to June 30th, 2016.
Second.
Motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Position? I think there's one more, Mike.
I've got one on this side.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
An appointment to the Central Connecticut Health District. Deborah R. Pierce Henault, 59 Burwood Road, from April 4th of 16 to June 30th of 19.
Second. We have a motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Position? Thank you. And we will move into the business. 3A.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the restated plan documents for the towns 3, 4...
four oh one A plans in order to conform to current IRS requirements.
I second that.
We have a motion of second. I assume Mike is here to take us through it. Mike?
I am. Good evening. Mike O'Neill, Finance Director. This item is a relatively routine exercise related to the three defined contribution plans that the town has established. One is for a former town manager, Mr. Erdman. The second one is for the current town manager, Mr. Bridges. And then the third plan that's been established is for all town employees who are not eligible for the town pension plan. And these, all three plans are, they're four oh one A plans under IRS regulations. They're all administered by ICMA RC, which is the, they've been the plan administrator for those for a very long time. They're a large organization that does a lot of this for governments all over the country. We're required to have, for each one of these three plans, a plan document in place that defines how the plan works. And it has to be, the workings of that plan have to be compliant with legislation, federal legislation and federal regulations at all times. So the IRS does a review every six years of these plans. We're required, as sponsors, to submit our plan to the IRS and have it approved every six years. ICMA does that for us, so that's, that's what's happening here. ICMA goes through, basically what they do year to year is, if federal legislation is passed, there was legislation in two thousand five after Hurricane Katrina that allowed people to withdraw money from their four oh one A plans for costs related to the storm. So that legislation kind of gets attached as exhibit A to the plan document. Those things occur over time, and then, again, every six years, the IRS says, you know, clean things up, take all those attachments, and just incorporate them into the body of the plan document itself. So that's what ICMA has done. They have not changed any contribution percentages, no town matches, nothing like that, nothing that's any cost to the town. It's strictly to comply with the federal legislative and regulatory requirements for the plans. So again, what this item is, is simply, ICMA has, has walked us through this whole process very organized. They have a checklist that we have to go through and make sure that we state the plan properly based on all these new regulations and legislation. We've done that, and we're simply coming to the council to adopt those restated plans, and then we will then submit those back to ICMA. They're due by the end of the month, and they'll, they'll just, we'll have a kind of a clean plan document for each of those three plans in place.
Thank you, Mike. That's a very helpful explanation. Questions for Mike on this? Mike, Ralph?
Thanks, Mike. Just because the restatement was now almost ten years ago, I had not seen this before. Do you have an idea of how many employees, other than, you know, former town manager Lee Erdman and Jeff Bridges, who would be eligible for this?
I want to say it's about forty or fifty employees at this point. And again, it's everyone who, at, at the time the town closed the pension plan, employees hired since that time have joined this plan instead.
Okay.
And it's also used for police, for their, for their private duty.
Oh, okay. Is there a, I mean, do we have an idea how much, does, how much does the town put into this plan?
Four percent match, four and a half?
Newly hired employees, four and a half, matched by the employee at four and a half.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Other questions for Mike O'Neill? Seeing none, pretty straightforward. We have a motion of second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you, Mike. We'll move into bids for A.
Motion to award the sandblasting, caulking, painting bid to Superior Finishes for thirty-one thousand five hundred dollars.
Second.
Motion of second. Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Staff, staff is recommending using Superior Finishes. It's not the lowest bidder, but it is the lowest responsible bidder. References on the lowest bidder showed that they had some complaints with the Better Business Bureau, and they had not really done a municipal swimming pool before. Whereas Superior has done pools before, and they have a much better record in that area. So, and it's still within the budget of thirty-five thousand, so staff's recommending Superior.
Thank you. Questions for Jeff on that? So there was backup explanation as well in the back. Seeing none, we have a motion of second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. For B.
This is a motion to authorize the award of a contract to Med Bill Management to perform an audit of town and Board of Education medical claims for the period from January first two thousand and fourteen through December thirty-first, two thousand and fifteen, and additionally to perform a dependent eligibility verification. Costs will be paid out of the self-insurance hospital and medical reserve fund.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion of second. I know Chris and Mike are here for that.
We, in November, issued an RFP for medical claim audit. We had five respondents. Chris Monroe, our medical consultant, was instrumental in helping us go through those and kind of understand that.
I think it was just the noise from the...
I'm gonna let Chris kind of take everyone through the process and the analysis that we did. There were five respondents to the RFP. We interviewed four firms, all very good firms, and, you know, we've got a proposed decision for you tonight that I think would be a good fit for the town. But I'm gonna let, I'm gonna let Chris take you through that.
Thanks, Mike.
Again, good evening. My name is Chris Monroe. I am a Senior Vice President with USI Insurance Services, and then for a number of years served as the town and the board's agent of record on their health and welfare plan. If you could just indulge me one second, where I can get this...
You can pave the way.
Yeah, fast learner. What we have before you goes back to when we first served up the idea of a claim audit. I think it was back in December of two thousand and fourteen, when we first came to the town council and started to highlight the reasons why there's value in at least pursuing the concept of an audit. What we've prepared tonight is a little bit of a look back to that presentation. We updated some of the financial numbers that speak to our current health and welfare plan, the spend that works through that plan in a given year, and also, we recapped some of the work that myself, Mike, and Chris Bazanet did as the subcommittee that was charged with putting out the RFP, evaluating the responses, and then working with the insurance committee to come up with an initial recommendation, and then present that recommendation to you folks here tonight. Back in two thousand and fourteen, we did again approach the town council and provided some information relative to the background and the focus of our claim audit. In terms of background, we wanted to reinforce our current carrier partner back in two thousand and fourteen, and it continues till today. We do work with Blue Cross and Blue Shield as our claim administrator. We spoke to our annual cost flow, as well as the historical claim expenditures that have worked through our arrangement with Blue Cross going back to two thousand and eight. We talked a little bit about the scope of the audit, our role as the fiduciary, and possible outcomes of that audit. Just a little bit of a recap, as mentioned before. When you look at what falls under the health and welfare umbrella, you're talking about our medical plan, our dental plan, our pharmacy plan, our life and disability lines, whether it be for the town or the board. Those plans apply to not only our active employees, but also retirees, whether they're early retirees under the age of sixty-five, or retirees who are over the age of sixty-five. All of our plans have consideration for not only covering employees, but any eligible spouse and dependent. When you look at what I would call our ancillary lines, our life and disability, those lines are fully insured through an arrangement that we have in place with Aetna. All of our other lines are self-insured. So whether it be our medical, our dental, or our pharmacy, those lines of business are self-insured through Blue Cross and Blue Shield. We serve as the plan administrator. We serve as the entity that has full fiduciary control over those plans. We simply retain Blue Cross to serve as our administrator, as is the case in all self-insured arrangements. We do have a level of insurance protection when it comes to large claims. We have in place a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar stop-loss policy. What that in essence means is if we see any adverse claim action on a given individual, we fund up to the first hundred and twenty-five thousand, and then Blue Cross assumes the risk on any dollar value in excess of that threshold. When you look at the estimated annual spend, we are currently projecting our cost to be in the range of about ten point two million. One point two million of that represents fixed costs, our admin fees, our network access fees, the aforementioned stop-loss premium. That's all rolled up under that one point two million. Everything else is raw claims. So when you look at how we split the baby, if you will, ninety cents in every dollar is representative of the actual claims that are incurred, presented for payment, and processed by Blue Cross and Blue Shield. Dollar for dollar, up to that hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar threshold is funded by the town and board. If you go back to two thousand and eight, you will find that we have seen close to seventy million dollars in medical claims processed from two thousand and eight to where we are today. So when you look at the background, it begs the question, and we've asked ourselves the question many times over, with that type of claim flow, with the number of people that we have on the plan, how do we know Blue Cross is being a good advisor? How do we know that they are processing claims in an appropriate manner? And we've typically answered the question, we've seen no evidence that suggests that they haven't, but in order to fully answer that question, you really need to consider a claim audit. You really need to consider looking at all aspects of the plan and making sure that there's the ability to audit their service model and make sure that claims are paid effectively. So that was kind of how we first started to serve up the issue back in two thousand and fourteen. What we then did is we talked a little bit about the scope of service. How would we approach it? What are some of the things that we would look for if we were to proceed with a claim audit? I apologize for the, the font. Oh, we'll get that in a second. Yep. This does speak to that exhibit that I had talked about, where you can literally see every working component of our current arrangement. In this exhibit, and this is one that we maintain every single month, we look at where we are relative to budget. We look at the number of people that we have enrolled in the plan in a given year. We measure what we assume that enrollment to be and what has actually come through. We then isolate the total value of our fixed cost. We look at our actual claims. We look at any reimbursement dollars that we might get back from Blue Cross, and we're simply coming up with where have we fared relative to budget, and what have we seen in terms of our per capita claim spend over the course of the last six, seven, eight years? So it gives us a nice opportunity to kind of measure how things have worked out in our relationship with Blue Cross. But this exhibit, again, does reinforce the fact that we've pushed through close to seventy million dollars in claims since two thousand and eight, and it does kind of speak to why there is value in doing a claim audit, to make sure we have the right administrator in terms of Blue Cross and the work that they do on our behalf. So what would the role of an audit firm be when it comes to validating the work done by Blue Cross? You're obviously looking to accomplish a couple different things. You're looking to make sure that Blue Cross is following in an effective manner the policies, procedures, and internal controls of a claim payer. You're looking to make sure that we are processing claims on folks who are truly eligible dependents. Okay? When you talk about eligible dependents, you're really talking about spouses and dependent children. The concern that you always have, do you have a situation where there's an amicable divorce, and that person doesn't know any better, and they keep their ex-wife or ex-husband on the plan? That is not an eligible dependent. Are we processing claims on eligible dependents? What type of checks and balances in place to make sure the folks who are on the plan are the intended people who should benefit from their enrollment on the plan? Are we making sure that Blue Cross is processing claims in a manner where they're not paying claims twice? You look at a large claimant, as you could imagine, there's a whole host of individual claim codes that would be submitted to support payment on any large claimant. Is Blue Cross doing all the right things to make sure there aren't duplicate claims and the right audit controls are in place? We have collectively bargained arrangements in place with all our unions. Generally, every three years, we sit down and renegotiate the terms of those arrangements. Do you have a situation where, as an example, a union should be paying a hundred dollar copay for an ER visit, but Blue Cross has erroneously structured a fifty dollar copay? A member will come to you and they are paying more. I don't see many instances when a member will come to you and they're actually paying less. So it's those things that you tend to look for in terms of outlining the proper scope of an audit, and some of the things you want that audit firm to uncover if you retain them and you move forward with them. Blue Cross has and touts the discount arrangements that they have with their providers. We get a fifty-five percent hospital discount on all inpatient services. We get a twenty-five percent discount on all brand-name drugs. That discount jumps to fifty-five percent if it's a drug that's dispensed in a hospital setting. How do we know that they're applying the proper discounts? Those are all the things you concern yourself with in an audit environment. Why is there value in doing it? Again, we are the plan administrator. We have fiduciary responsibility over the plan. Being a good fiduciary does speak to making sure that the proper controls are in place to look at who we're partnering with and to validate that they're doing a good job on our behalf. So everything that I've talked about so far speaks to who we are, who we're working with, what's the dollar value of what we're paying on our, spending on our plan, and why there's value in pursuing an audit. What are some of the things the audit firm will look at? What are some of the pitfalls if Blue Cross isn't doing it in the proper manner, and why does it make sense for us as the plan sponsor to kind of at least explore the viability of an audit? So this was the message we served up in two thousand and fourteen. The green light we got from the council was, okay, start the process of moving forward. No guarantees, but we are open to putting out an RFP. We are open to soliciting bids from audit firms, and then report back to us your findings. And obviously, that's the second piece of what we want to present tonight. To some of the points that Mike raised, we did release an RFP in the later half of two thousand and fifteen. We had asked all respondents to get that, their responses into us by, in essence, January one. We had many an instance where we were going back and forth in terms of answering questions that grew out of their initial review of the RFP. When it was all said and done, we did get five respondents who submitted proposals. So we'll talk a little bit to that and what came out of our review of those proposals. We'll talk a little bit about the key findings. We'll talk about kind of an evaluation, vendor evaluation criteria that we use and how we ranked everybody, and then obviously, we'll finish up with some discussion on our recommendations as to we think the strongest vendor was. to we think the strongest vendor was. This gives you a feel for when we initially released the RFP back in November. All the bids were due, in essence, by January one. We did create a pretty good vendor criteria overview, which essentially allowed Mike, Chris, and myself to kind of say, here are some of the hot buttons relative to what we're looking for. Here's kind of the benchmark or the report card that we're going to use to measure everybody against. A couple comments on that. We left the cost piece till the end. All of the bids came in sealed envelopes. So we were first charged with, let's make sure without any consideration of cost, who kind of bubbles up to the top in terms of the criteria that we've established? Some of the criteria that we kind of put on our evaluation, how long have they been doing this? What other municipalities have they worked with? Have they ever audited a Blue Cross of Connecticut account? If you audited a hundred different health plans, but it was Cigna, Blue Cross of California, Blue Cross of North Carolina, that's great, but we wanted to know who was working with other groups in Connecticut, and more importantly, who was working with other municipalities in Connecticut. We wanted to get from these carriers a strong understanding of what is the focus? You know, how do you kind of crack the nut? What are the things you look at? This is our first rodeo when it comes to a claim audit. You tell us, if you were in our shoes, what are some of the things that you would encourage us to look at? So we tried to be very thorough in terms of not only kind of qualifying them, but also getting a feel for kind of how they would approach the project. We wanted to make sure that we spent a lot of time working with their references. We wanted to make sure we had an opportunity to kind of interview our four respondents. So we kind of got everything laid out, and we racked and stacked them, and then we went to the envelope to see what everybody was proposing for a fee. Mike had referenced that we started with five, and we proceeded with interviewing four. One of the firms that we disqualified was HMS. They were just such an outlier from a price standpoint that we felt we had four good carriers to start our work with, that it was tough to justify what these four carriers were delivering from a price point, and then kind of step away and look at this firm who was up in the seventy-five thousand dollar range. So we kind of discounted them in terms of our work. And to the point raised before, we spent a lot of time, not only Mike, Chris, and myself getting everybody ranked, if you will. We went through an interview process where we spent a lot of time with these four vendors. We spent a lot of follow-up work with them, making sure we kind of validated what we thought was growing out of their response, and ultimately present is why we think Med Bill is the right fit on a go-forward basis. When you look at the four firms, or the five firms, we were looking at price points anywhere from a low of around nineteen thousand up to seventy-five thousand. When we kind of pulled back and excluded the highest price, we were looking at price points anywhere from nineteen thousand to forty. We were very impressed with all four firms. They had all been in this market for a lot of years. They all could deliver, as you would expect, very good references. They could all deliver work that they had done with municipal entities, with a few being able to point to local municipalities that they currently are working with or have worked with in the past. So we felt pretty good that all four firms would do a good job in terms of what they were charged with when you review the initial RFP. This is not a process that will wrap itself up in thirty days. They were all very consistent, and this process will roll out over a four- to six-month period. There's a lot of work that needs to be done on the front end in terms of data sharing. There's a lot of work that needs to be done in terms of making sure we work with Blue Cross to outline what is expected of them, what we expect in terms of putting an audit team in their claim office in Wallingford. So a lot of work comes into play upfront, but again, it's important to note that this is a four-to-six-month process when you look at start to finish. Some of the things that we had learned, which is critical to the exercise, is we had originally approached it as having these firms pull a random sample from Blue Cross, and based upon the results of that random sample, start their audit work. A few firms said, we will give you what you're looking for, but if it were us, we think you need to pull away from a random sample. We think based upon your size, based upon what you're looking to accomplish, we think you should go in more of what they call a targeted sample. So instead of pulling things randomly, let us secure from Blue Cross a full claim file that captures every single claim paid in a two-year period. We will run that claim file through algorithms that we set up, and we will, through that electronic analysis, be able to focus in on those problem points. So you're taking the randomness of your audit off the table, and you're focusing in exactly on your irregularities. You take those irregularities, and that's what we use when we actually travel to Blue Cross. We put ourselves on the ground for two or three days and go through the exact claims that bubbled up as problem points. So it's a more surgical approach to what you want to accomplish. So that's a perfect example of, you know, we gave points to the firms that said, hey, we think you might want to pivot and kind of go in a different direction in terms of what you're looking to accomplish. The reason I bring it up is, again, there was so much that went into making sure we put in the time to pick the right firm, but also make sure we are doing it in a manner that ultimately gives us the benefit that we thought we would glean in starting this project. All right? Some of the things that we had talked about was, when you look at our nine million dollar claim spend, the vast majority of that spend, seventy-five, eighty percent, is in medical claims. It begs the question, should you audit your pharmacy claims? All of these vendors, in their bid submission, gave us a price for, here's what we would charge if we audited your medical. Here's what we would charge if you audited your pharmacy. Through some of the things that we gathered, through some of the things that we kind of understood going into it, they were all pretty universal in saying, hey, you know, the ten thousand dollars that we'll charge you due to the pharmacy, if you want us to audit the pharmacy, we will. But we don't see, based upon our experience, a lot of problems when it comes to pharmacy spend. So we'll take your ten thousand dollars if you want, but we think you're better positioned to focus solely on the medical. And we took that suggestion to heart. Many of these firms also said, if you're going to go through this exercise, you should also consider doing a dependent audit. How do you know, based upon the fourteen hundred people who are on the plan, that you have the proper eligible spouses and dependents enrolled? And I think we do a very good job of making sure that we're asking the right questions upfront, but there's no way to ward against, again, that divorce where somebody doesn't take their spouse off, and are you paying claims on somebody who's not an eligible dependent? Do you have maybe an employee who has custody of their grandkids? Well, unless that's legally defined, that is not an eligible dependent. Those are the things you look for in a dependent audit. So one of the things that kind of grew out of our analysis, if we're focused on doing a medical, is there value in doing a dependent audit? A lot of these firms, Med Bill notably, has essentially said, we'll give you a price for the dependent audit, and we'll guarantee the savings. So we will ask that you pay a little bit less than fourteen thousand dollars to do a dependent audit, but we will guarantee a dollar-for-dollar return on that payment to us. They are confident enough that they will find people who should not be on the plan, and they will guarantee a dollar-for-dollar return on their ability to root out an ineligible dependent and get that person taken off the plan. In terms of the dependent audit, what do you potentially look to recoup for any dependent who would be removed from the plan? The industry average is around three to four thousand dollars per eligible dependent. So if the averages hold true, what Med Bill said is, you know, we think we'll come up with at least three or four people who are on the plan who shouldn't be. And if you extrapolate that, snipping off of claim payments on a go-forward basis, we think the savings will clearly be enough to recoup that thirteen, fourteen thousand dollars that we want to charge for the audit. So there was certainly an interest on our end from pursuing that. This is a little bit of how we ranked all of the firms, where we tried to, again, look at things such as overall assessment, quality of the leadership, the quality of the team, their depth of experience, their client management approach, the flexibility of responding to our needs and price. And we kind of gave everybody a ranking, all right? And then when you kind of boiled it down, we felt that all of them would do a good job, but it really came down to a firm called BMI and Med Bill. As much as we like Siegel, we just felt the pricing from Siegel was excessive relative to these other firms. There's a company called CTI out of Iowa, you know, certainly had the credentials, but they were somewhat lacking when you compared them to the other three. So it really, in our mind, came down to a horse race between Med Bill and the folks Why are we recommending Med Bill? Med Bill's price was all-encompassing. They had quoted a price of eighteen thousand five hundred for the medical audit, and they had priced an additional cost of thirteen-five for the dependent audit, of which they guarantee a return on, dollar-for-dollar return on the thirteen-five. Where they distanced themselves from BMI is we have a variety of different unions, many that have multiple bargaining arrangements. So using the classic example is, you know, a police officer who might have retired prior to two thousand has a different benefit than somebody retired after two thousand, or after two thousand and five, or two thousand and eight. So as much as you say you're auditing police, you're really auditing potentially five or six different contracts within that unit. The folks at Med Bill said, whether we're auditing twenty or thirty different contracts, our pricing is firm. The folks at BMI said, we will only guarantee our price based upon an auditing of eighteen individual contracts. And I know we have more than eighteen contracts. There was a five hundred dollar upcharge for each contract over the eighteen. So it became what we considered too much of an open checkbook. And they were also a little bit higher than Med Bill. So as much as we, if price was not a consideration, they'd do a fine job for us. We think we were very universal in ultimately coming to a decision that we felt Med Bill is the right play for the town. We were encouraged by kind of what we thought the pricing would be when we first started this exercise. We had expected it to be in the forty to forty-five thousand dollar range on the medical audit only. So we were certainly encouraged when, all in, with the dependent audit and the medical audit, you're looking at the thirty-two, thirty-three thousand dollar range. So a little bit of a history about where we were back in December of two thousand and fourteen, all of the detail in terms of where we were then, where we are now, everything that went into the work that we did to make sure we properly vetted everybody and took the steps needed to kind of isolate who we felt was the right partner for the town. I apologize for being long-winded, but that's a little bit of a drill down on kind of where we were and where we are now.
Well, that's going up. Chris, excellent presentation. I mean, you said long-winded. I thought that was terrific. It wasn't too long, but it was extremely thorough and helped explain something I think we've been talking about, but...
Thank you.
One question that jumps to mind immediately for me is this issue of recovery. So they refer to that, and they're obviously indicating that they guarantee the net on the thirteen-five. Do they actually administer the recovery process based only on the audit? And if they find in the audit there are other areas to examine, do they then suggest to you, we might venture in this area as well if they see something that seems unusual?
Yeah, as far as, they kind of split things in two. And from a dependent audit, the way they approach that, Paul, is they say, okay, we are going to be the communication arm, communication arm for the town and the board. So we'll go to your people, we'll provide the mailings, we'll provide the call center, and we'll let them know why we're doing this. And we'll let them know that the goal is not to be punitive. The goal is to simply make sure that we put in place the proper controls to make sure an eligible dependent is on the plan. So what they'll do with that, Paul, is they'll come back to us, and they'll say, okay, we found five people, ten people, and we'll then take that information and we'll work with Blue Cross. Are we interested in pursuing recovery? Was it an honest mistake, or was there malice involved in that person's decision to keep that dependent on the plan? Those are some of the decisions that we'll have to make. But as a committee, we kind of looked at it and said, you can measure your savings in terms of going backward to recover that or going forward. If we have ten people who, on average, generated twenty-five thousand dollars and you take them off the plan, then you know you can argue, on average, going forward, there's twenty-five thousand dollars in savings. So that's kind of how they would approach it from, here's how we work through the dependent audit piece. Little bit different on the claim audit. They'll get that claim file, they'll ask Blue Cross to populate it in a certain manner, they run it through their algorithms, and then they'll go back to Blue Cross and say, okay, here are the claims that we think are problematic. Here are the claims that we want to audit on-site. Blue Cross will set the ground rules. You know, one of the ground rules that Blue Cross will set is, before you serve any information up to the town, we have the right to review your findings and respond to those findings. So we're either going to agree, or we're going to disagree and challenge the position that you're taking. It does become a negotiation. If it's very much black and white, where, hey, here's a contract, here's where you were told to charge that member twenty dollars for your PTOT speech visits, and you charge nothing, well, if we go back the last three years and you take that loss of twenty dollars a member, and you multiply it out, well, guess what? That's seventy-five hundred dollars. It's hard for Blue Cross to say, yeah, we don't owe you that. You know, it becomes a little bit more of a gray area when you get into kind of more of your high dollar. Did you apply the first, did you apply the right approach when it came to how you audited that high-dollar claimant? Is the plan document clear on what was expected in terms of how that was claimed was to be paid? But direct answer to your question is, from a claim standpoint, that's where all the work is. That's where it really is a partnership with us, the town, the audit firm, and Blue Cross. You know, as we said to Blue Cross, nobody's looking to uncover, you know, a hundred thousand. If it's there, great, but this is just an exercise to make sure that Blue Cross is doing it right, that we are, in our role as the fiduciary, making sure that for this expenditure, the proper checks and balances are in place.
I just had a question. So you, originally, the thought was do a random audit, and then you said, pretty much everyone said targeted is the way to go. Who determines the targeted process or what the targets are?
Great question. You know, one of the questions we said is, you might say target's the way to go. We might agree, but what does Blue Cross say? And they said, no, no, we work with Blue Cross. And Med Bill cited they are doing audits right now for the City of Meriden and the Town of Southington. So what they said is, Blue Cross knows that for every client that's a random, there are clients that do a targeted. So they get it, they understand it. They will kind of work with us to make sure that the... They will kind of work with us to make sure that the information that's coming over on the claim file is thorough. The last thing Blue Cross wants to do is provide a data set that has missing elements. So they want to make sure that what we're asking for and what they're providing is a full picture of an individual claim. And then we get that over and then that's where they do their scrubbing, Steve, to make sure, is there anything popping out? You know, if you've got one claim that pops out against 24,000 others, well, is that just a one-off or is that systematic of other things that are going on? If 100 claims pop out that have the same error, that's really where your pursuit is right there. So that's where they go to Blue Cross and say, "You know, we're not going down the rabbit hole on two or three claims. There's 30, 40, 50 that seem to be problematic. You know, let's kind of drill down on those 50 to make sure, you know, our findings are in line with kind of Blue Cross, what happened here?" You know? The problem you run into is 70, 80% of all claims never touch a human's hands. They just come in electronically. So if it wasn't structured on the front end, then everything that comes in might not have the intended claim-paying outcome. So that's kind of how we went from random to targeted. And usually we're comfortable going there is, again, for every one who does a random, there's an equal number that do targeted. And based upon the conversations we had, we kind of looked at it as a group and said, "That's clearly a better way to go than a random sample." Yes?
Sorry, Donna.
No, go ahead.
Very thorough, Chris. This was great. I'm glad you mentioned Southington. I did, just checking, just simply, you know, background on Med Bill. I think they just wrapped up their audit for Southington just a couple of weeks ago. But having looked at some of the articles about Med Bill and, you know, the pushback that they got from some of the unions and the employees in Southington, granted it's a much larger population, I think 800 employees versus, you know, I think you had up 400 for us. They had to go for an extension for their contract with the town of Southington. I don't think they charged more for the extension to compile, you know, the additional documents and the hesitation on the employees to turn in birth certificates, marriage certificates, divorce decrees, you know, what have you. Would Med Bill stay true to that $32,000 figure or would they, you know, charge more if the time period goes longer?
You know, I think, Mike, that's a question we need to ask them. You know, all the conversations that we've had have been based upon the four to six-month timeframe, but you raise a very good point. Well, what happens if it's not four to six, that you're kind of chasing a lot of these people down? We're telling you not to snip them off, keep chasing them till you get the information and it's seven or eight months. We will confirm whether the pricing holds.
Okay.
And if it doesn't, then obviously we're kind of back before you to say, "Hey, it's not 32. If it goes beyond the six months, it's 38, whatever." But that's a good point that we'll need to run down.
Thanks, Chris.
Yep.
Now, I know in the slide deck you referred to some of the other types of health and welfare benefits and saw the life and disability. And I just want to make sure publicly, I work at Aetna and just want to make sure that there's no life, disability, you know, auditing that will be done related to that.
No, this will be medical only.
That's what I thought, but I just needed to state that publicly.
No pharmacy, no dental, medical only.
Thanks.
Thank you, Donna. Other questions?
I actually just had one more. The, on the dependent audit, the presentation, they guaranteed that we would have a recovery equal to what the cost was, the $13,500 or whatever the cost was. Above and beyond the $13,500, do we get that entire benefit as well or do they get a portion of that?
Nope, there's no contingency here. You know, these are fixed-price payments. If they say, "We're going to charge you $13,500," and they come up with $40,000 in identifiable savings, then, you know, we recoup the $40,000. So there's no contingency over and above based upon a level of savings.
Okay, great.
Anything else? So one last thing, Chris, on that. Obviously, they know they're going to find those because they're guaranteeing to put or pay there. So if it were to be found for less, they're not getting paid that amount, obviously, in the agreement. So it must be a fairly common event then.
They were like, "There's no such thing as a no-brainer except this because we know we're going to find people." And, you know, we're like, and we pushed them on it, you know, "What are you going to find?" And they're the ones who came back with, you know, the divorced couple, you know, the dependent child who actually might be a grandchild and has been enrolled as a dependent. Not anything malicious, you know, I've, I'm the grandparent, I've had, you know, I've been raising these grandkids, but I never went to court to get legal guardianship. You know, their offers are well-intended, but they're not that grandparent's legal dependent unless the court says they are. And as a result of that, they're really not allowed on the plan. So those are the type of things that kept on coming back, Paul, in terms of, you know, as much as you think you're safeguarding and you're policing it, you might not be. Some of it could be unintentional, but some of it could be fraudulent. You just don't know, you know?
I noticed that you referenced, you know, there's like, these are calculations, but if they found one, let's pick one that was found to be a violation and they did it during this test period that you've referred to, but then they, assumably they go back and look at how long that person improperly was on the plan?
Yeah, the good thing about being self-insured, we have access to a whole host of data sets, if you will. So let's assume they say, "Here's the five people that know ifs, ands or buts should not be on the plan." All right? Two spouses and three dependents. All right, what I do is I go back to Blue Cross and say, "Hey, here's five people. Here's their social security numbers. I want you to go back to 2012 and tell me exactly doll, to the penny, what was paid on their behalf, whether it's medical, pharmacy or dental. And say that rolls up to $40,000, all right? Then we've got a decision to make. Do we go back to that person and say, you know, "You owe us the money?" Or do we take the position of, "All right, we're just going to stop it from here on out" where we're going to take them off? Those become some of the follow-up discussions. You know, one of the things that these folks will recommend, and they all do, there's an amnesty. You know, you go to people to announce the program and you say, "No ifs, ands or buts, now's your time. If you worry about the people you have on the plan, whether they should be or not, you know, here's your amnesty. You've got 30 days to take that person off. And if you don't, then, you know, you're subject to consequences." That's kind of the guidance that we were given, you know, that you need to be thorough in your work and you need to recognize that you're probably going to find some people that bubble up who shouldn't be on the plan.
Thanks, Chris. I'm sure I may have all of us. Thank you again. Very thorough, a lot of confidence in going forward, I'm sure, so. Any other questions? Very good. We have a motion of second to accept the recommendations from Chris and Mike. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. Thank you again. Good luck.
Thank you, folks.
I'm sure we'll see you in a few months.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, we have that introduction, that motion and then the minutes. Prove them. Yep.
Can I just mention something on the introduction?
Yes, go.
That introduction, that resolution is a resolution that would allow the town to participate in a collective stop-loss insurance program being organized by Cracker and about 15 other towns at this point, basically on the KERMA model. We don't know yet if we want to participate. We're going to spend the next month or so reviewing that, but we introduced this today. So it could be, we could have a public hearing in May and be ready for July if, in fact, it is a positive thing for us to do. So we're going to spend April vetting this with the insurance committee and the captive and everything else. So we may get to hearing and say, "We'll have the hearing, but we're not quite ready to decide," but at least the hearing's out of the way.
Right, so this won't follow the normal pattern. This will be out a little ways before we'll actually have a public hearing on it.
Well, you won't have another regular meeting till May because your next meeting is consumed with the budget, so this will be set for the May hearing date.
Good. No, thank you for that clarification. Very good. The last item is the minutes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of March 21st, 2016.
Second.
Motion of second. Any additions, changes? Anything good on them? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Public comment? Any public comment? Bob?
Robert Young, 20 Copper Mill Road, Weathersfield. At your last town council meeting, there were two speakers that spoke about the Niagara Bottling Company issue up in Bloomfield. And I know as the meeting went on, there was some discussion up here at the diocese that you were going to put together a letter to the MDC. And I'm just checking in to see if it's available, if it's for public consumption. I'd appreciate a copy if possible, see how it looks, what it says, because I think it is a very important issue. And of course, you know, we do still get more articles in the paper regarding, there's plenty of water. I'm going to save this because I'll be calling this person when they start coming out in summertime saying, "You got to hold back." So just wanted to check on that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bob. Anything else? Entertained a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion of second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.